of Los Gatos. May we have a roll call, please?
Commissioner O'Donnell.
Here.
Commissioner Talisfor.
Here.
Commissioner Bourgeois.
Here.
Commissioner Birch.
Here.
Vice Chair Smith.
Here.
Chair Erickson.
Here. And the town attorney just reminded me that it's June, not January, when I said we'd call the meeting, so I've lost somewhere six months in the last few days. Would everyone please join Commissioner Talisfor, who will lead us in, the Pledge of Allegiance?
Thank you. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The Town of Los Gatos and the Planning Commission encourages active participation on the part of the public, which is a cornerstone of democracy and a very important part of how this commission conducts its business and represents, well, the citizens of the Town of Los Gatos and its responsibilities back to the Town Council. There are several ways that the members of the public can participate in the deliberations of the Planning Commission. We always encourage written comments about agenda items to come to the staff so that they can be incorporated in the packet that goes to the commission before items are considered at a meeting. At the means of the commission, there are two ways for the public to participate. One is during the public portion of a public hearing of agendized items. The other is a part that we'll get to in a few minutes in the agenda called verbal communications, when members of the public can address the commission for up to three minutes on any item which is not agendized for a meeting. If you wish to address the commission this evening in either of those instances, either during the public portion of a public hearing of an agendized item, or during the written communications, we would ask that you fill out a speaker card that is located on the back of the chamber benches, and turn it into the recording secretary to our left so that we can call people in proper order. And we would ask that you print your name very clearly so that I can call you by the name properly. So, we would, once again, encourage everyone's active participation in the meeting this evening. We have minutes from the May 22, 2013, meeting of the commission that were distributed to the members. Are there additions, corrections, or comments on the minutes, or a motion to adopt? Commissioner Bourgeois?
Motion to approve as submitted.
Motion by Commissioner Bourgeois, second by Commissioner Smith. All in favor say aye. Opposed? Passed unanimously. I don't believe we have any written communications this evening. Is that correct?
That's correct.
We have no requested continuances this evening. In addition to the service on the Planning Commission, members of the commission serve on other committees of the town. Last week, there was a meeting of the Historic Preservation Committee, and Commissioner O'Donnell will give us a report on that meeting.
Last week, when we met the Preservation Committee, we considered three matters. One was at 134 Loma Alta, and that was requesting to demolish it. We'd previously considered that at least once before, and we agreed that there was no reason to save the structure, and there were reasons to take it down. So, that was approved. The second matter we considered was 255 Los Gatos Boulevard, and that was simply a question of some remodeling that was going on, and what kind of materials could be used, and we gave advice on that. Finally, at 399 Nicholson Avenue, was a request for a demolition, and that particular building had been added to over a period of time, on a somewhat difficult lot, and after looking at it, reviewing it, and discussing it, we approved the demolition.
Thank you, Commissioner O'Donnell. Are there questions for Commissioner O'Donnell? If not, there was also a meeting of the General Plan Committee earlier today. Commissioner Bourgeois will report on that.
Thank you. Yes, the General Plan Committee met just prior to this meeting, and we had two substantial items. The first was for 375 Knowles, otherwise known as the courthouse site, the old county courthouse site. This commission will remember that that was, at one time, proposed to be one of the Affordable Housing Overlay Zone sites, but was subsequently removed. The portion of that, that's actually three parcels. Two of them have been purchased and are being developed, and there's a PD application into staff right now for small lot, single-family homes. So, we had to do some, since it was designated as public, quasi-public, as a courthouse, we had to do some adjustments to the general plan, to make sure the general plan characterization and the zoning actually matched each other. And there was also a council resolution saying that if it did not, development on that property would not be permitted if it did not match the Affordable Housing Overlay Zone, but since there's no longer an overlay zone, we had to make those resolutions. So, we discussed and came to agreement on that. And then, secondly, we had to look at zoning ordinance amendments based on the implementation of state-certified housing elements. So, we had to change some definitions and some procedures in our ordinance, and we've made those recommendations, and the Planning Commission will be seeing that at some time in the future.
Thank you, Commissioner Bourgeois. Are there questions for Commissioner Bourgeois? We would now move to the portion of the agenda called verbal communications, and invite any member of the public to address the commission on any item which is not on the agenda this evening. We don't have any speaker cards, but I would invite anyone who would like to address the commission to come forward. Seeing no one, we'll move on. There are no items on a consent calendar this evening. There are no continued public hearings on the agenda tonight. Before we move to item number one, while all members of the commission are here, still here in attendance, we would like to pay special recognition to Linda Rolet, who is the recording secretary and has been that for the last four and a half years for the commission, and she's been a terrific resource for all of us, has kept kind of knucklehead chairs like me on task, and has done a terrific job of recording the minutes and transcribing it. And I know that all of the commissioners appreciate Linda's efforts, and those of us who have served as chairs particularly appreciate it. And this will be Linda's last meeting in that role, so we wanted to express our appreciation to Linda for all of her efforts. We'll move to item number one on our agenda, which is a conditional use permit application, U-13-009, which is requesting approval of veterinary hospital at 15965 Los Gatos Boulevard on property zone CHPD. Are there any disclosures by commissioners for this item? We have a show of hands that everyone knows where the property is, probably, given that it's, at this point in time, undeveloped property, but everyone is aware of where the property is. Could we have a brief staff report, Ms. Walters?
Yes, thank you. Good evening. The veterinarian hospital use is proposed to occupy roughly 6,000 square feet on the first floor of a two-story building near the corner of Placer Oaks Road and Los Gatos Boulevard. The proposed two-story building is located within the commercial shopping center on the northwest corner of Los Gatos Boulevard and Blossom Hill Road, formerly the Swanson Ford site. The commercial center is made up of two independent buildings, which are in the early stages of construction. Three conditional use permits with three different tenant spaces will be reviewed this evening, a bank, a restaurant, and the subject application for the veterinarian hospital. And at this time, I'd like to correct the ownership of the property. At the time we received the application, it was owned by D.R. Horton. Since then, it's been deeded back to CHL Ventures. So, now, D.R. Horton owns the residential component, and CHL Ventures owns the commercial component. And this concludes staff's report.
Are there any questions of staff at this point in time? Commissioner Bourgeois?
Thank you. First of all, I don't know if this was staff's doing or the applicant's doing, but I really appreciate being able to see these multiple applications for a site at one time, or as close to each other as possible. It makes our job a lot easier, so I appreciate that, whoever's responsible for that. I do have a question about the parking analysis. If you go to, was it page five of the staff report, it has the proposed, all the proposed businesses that we're seeing today for the pending CUPs, and then it has these vacant with types of use. However, earlier in the staff report, it says there are pending applications for restaurants, and I don't see any of the vacant sites here listed as restaurants. And I know there's different parking requirements for office, retail, and restaurants. So, I'm just wondering, that just confused me, if you could help me out there?
Sure, I'm happy to answer that. At this time, those two applications are not complete, so we don't have how many seats are proposed, or actually the square footage for those two restaurants. So, with that in mind, staff has put together this analysis with what we do know.
But on those vacant spots, you have listed office and retail. So, again, I'm confused why, why wouldn't we show one of those, or both of those, as restaurant uses?
Oh, I'm sorry. So, again, at the time, we don't have the specific numbers for seats, so we can't assign those parking.
So, did you do a worst-case scenario? Is retail higher than restaurant use, or?
So, basically, what we would do is backtrack, based on the parking allotted in this table. That would dictate the number of seats.
That would dictate their seating?
Correct.
So, they couldn't exceed what's in this table?
Correct. They can't exceed the
The overall?
Overall parking requirements.
Okay. Great. Thank you.
Commissioner Talisfor.
Just for the record, I wanted to know regarding the hospital. I don't know this, but is it under any kind of state or county regulations, since it is a hospital and it's going to be, you know, operating and offering radiology, et cetera, et cetera? Are there any guidelines, or who oversees that for assurance to the town that everybody is in compliance?
So, the animal hospital, it's probably best when the applicant comes forward, they can probably answer that more directly, and if necessary, we can follow along with that.
Other questions for the staff at this time? If not, we would now open the public portion of the public hearing and invite the applicant forward to introduce themselves and to address the commission for up to five minutes. We'd ask that you please state your name for the record.
Hi, my name is Brian Maxwell. I'm president of Adobe Animal Hospital.
And Summer Holmstraer, Air Force Practice Manager of Adobe.
So, I guess specifically related to your question of state regulations, other than typical business OSHA regulations, we don't have any hospital-type oversight that's any different than a normal business. We have fire control, you know, fire marshal, safety regulations, that kind of thing, but nothing like a human hospital, any kind of overly different state oversight that I'm aware of.
So, for the radiology, no one comes and monitors that or checks it?
They have, the x-ray machine has to have a permit.
Okay. Can you speak a little bit about what's permit, you know, how that works?
Mr. Maxwell, before you do that, we need to give you your, up to five minutes, to let you do your presentation to us. You're quite free not to do that, if you would like, and we could just open it for questions, but we could also give you the five minutes that
Well, I thought he was going to start with that and then go into the presentation.
Okay. I didn't know I was giving a presentation. So, our goal is to open a veterinary hospital in Los Gatos. We've been in Los Altos for 45 years in a very successful business, and we have a large clientele in this area, and we feel we can provide a good service to open locally, so they don't have to commute to Los Altos. We have a plan to have up to four doctors at any one time. We're going to provide full service, veterinary care, ultrasound, internal medicine, surgical services. We won't have boarding, as was, you know, outlined in the report. There will be no boarding of animals, other than sick or injured patients that are in the hospital overnight. We're going to combine that with a retail section in this building that will be for high-end pet products and veterinary-related different medical products. And in terms, I guess, I would say that's pretty much my five-minute presentation.
Thank you very much. Does your partner have other comments that she would like to add at this time? Okay, thank you. And we would ask that you also fill out a card, so we could get your name accurately for the record. Now, Commissioner Talisfor.
So, would you continue, then, with what is regulated as far as your equipment and how that all works?
Okay. The only piece of equipment that I can think of that has special permitting is the x-ray machine, and it's not, there's a, I'm going to sort of do my best to explain it, because it's not my area of expertise, but we have a state permit for this machine, and so there's certain, maybe, I don't know, Brian, if you can answer this. This is our architect from Animal Arts in Colorado. There's certain issues with the room, I guess, perhaps.
I'm sorry.
I just ask you to introduce yourself, too, please.
And I'll fill out a card as well. My name is Brian King, and I'm with Mark Haven Architect, Animal Arts, and we're the architect that has helped Dr. Maxwell and his team with a couple of projects now. The requirements for radiation shielding in a typical x-ray room, or CT, any type of medical modality with radiation, is that there is a requirement for a physicist to study the exposure of radiation based on the adjacent occupancies. Normally, it doesn't really extend beyond the walls of the building itself. It's a fairly narrow scatter pattern for these small types of x-ray machines. And that physicist report, then, is prepared and submitted as part of the building permit application, and either the Health Department or the state regulatory agency will review that and approve it as part of the building permit application. And then, beyond that, there is typically an ongoing licensing requirement that the hospital has to have periodic inspections to make sure that the equipment is operating within the expected parameters. So, that really is, as Dr. Maxwell said, is really about the only piece of specialized equipment or anything that poses any risk to the building occupants in this hospital.
Okay. Thank you. That was the question I had. Follow-up question. So, my follow-up question, do you, do they, do you have inspections of a veterinary hospital for, you know, operational, daily operations, and about how things are disposed of, you know, needles?
Yes.
Blah, blah, blah. Can you talk about that?
Actually, throughout the year, we have several agencies who will come in to track our safety standards. We have local agencies, fire department, and things like that, who will come in. Also, there's two main organizations who, at any time, can walk in and inspect our facilities, particularly for safety, one of which is the California Veterinary Medical Association. They did that, actually, last year with us. We passed with flying colors. But they checked everything from how our things are stocked safely, actually, to our x-ray machine, making sure our permit was up to date and posted correctly. That, actually, with the x-ray machine, also, our staff wear badges whenever they enter that room and take an x-ray, making sure that their safety is also good, and that we're sending those into the regular, regulate, sorry, agencies on a basis. And then, we also voluntarily work with the American Animal Hospital Association. Uh-huh, we're registered with them. They also come once, once a year, to once every other year, to fully inspect us as well, and safety is one of their biggest things on that, and we've passed every time flying colors.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Commissioner Birch.
Kind of tying into that, how exactly do you dispose of your hazardous waste, and how often does that occur?
I'll answer that one. So, we contract to a company called Stericycle, which is probably used by all the other veterinary hospitals in the area. It's a very common company. We have special containers for all of our needles. They come usually once a week or every other week to collect that material. And any surgical waste, anything that could be hazardous, will go through their system.
And is that stored, then, outside the facility, or do you have a special locked storage facility where that will be inside?
I don't know if we have that in this hospital, where we've determined that will be. It will be indoors, though. It would be in a closet, or in a, it wouldn't be outside.
Okay. So, it's not accessible to the public in any way?
Yeah. No, no, no.
Okay. Thank you.
Commissioner Smith.
Thank you. Well, let me preface my comments by telling you that I used Adobe Animal Hospital in Los Altos for many, many years, and so I know of your fine reputation.
Thank you.
However, I'm going to redirect you to an issue for me, and that is that, according to your plans, you will have approximately 22 employees on-site every day, and that would be four veterinarians, 16 support staff, and then two to three in your retail operation. My question to you is, what plans do you have to park all of those employees?
Well, I would assume that they won't all be working on the same shifts, so that would be a maximum of overlap. We followed the parking guidelines for what was required and met those components, so we haven't gone further than that in terms of counting how many people would be parked in the lot versus other areas are commuting or using public transportation, because we don't know which staff members and where they live will be working at any one time.
Well, the reason why I raised the issue is, as I look at the plan, and the plan for the entire development, which wasn't your plan, I understand that, but I do see that for your retail and your hospital business, it's going to be very important for people to park close to you. And so, that's why I got to thinking about these employees, whether it's 15 cars, or 12 cars, or whatever it is, that is actually the space close to your business.
Right.
So, I didn't know if you had made any kind of arrangements for off-site parking, or arrangements with the landlord as to where all these employees will park?
We have not gotten to that level, although in Los Altos, assuming you've been to the old building, I don't know if you've been to our new location, but parking is always at a premium, and we basically have a certain amount of parking that will let our staff park in our lot, so that our clients and people coming into shop always have the ability to park. And then, the staff parking, then, is, we can't provide it all for them, so they either have to commute in, or be dropped off, or find off-site parking. If it became an issue, we would certainly look at other alternatives.
Correct. And so, you're getting to my point, which is, in Los Altos, if you disperse through the neighborhoods, and that happens here, I think you will have very unhappy neighbors, because already, they're going to have a 7,200-square-foot dog park in effect, or cat park, or, you know, whatever it's going to be, because you'll be using a lot of that park, I'm sure, for your animals, as will people who bring their animals in. So, the neighborhood is going to have to, I think they'll be on alert, so I'm giving you an alert, okay, about the employee parking dispersing in the neighborhood. It will be a challenge.
Maybe I can address one issue that, my firm designs animal hospitals and shelters all over the United States. This is our specialty. So, the only reason for that comment is that this comes from a basis of experience with this. And what we find is that jurisdictional parking requirements for veterinary hospitals are typically based on these formulas, like number of doctors on staff and square footage requirements. And in fact, the majority of the people that are actually at the hospital at any given time, the vast majority is the staff. The public, client-based parking requirements are actually quite minimal, because it's very short-term, very cyclical parking requirements, so what needs that they have. So, what we find is that the, in most situations, the parking requirements dictated by the township, town like yourself, is usually quite sufficient for staff and the intermittent client base. So, just an observational comment, if I could add.
I appreciate your observation. I'm going to strongly recommend I'm going to strongly recommend, this has nothing to do with whether or not I'm going to approve your CUP, that you encourage those employees to park in the least-used part of that lot.
Question if I can. Yeah. This is actually a question that's been sensitive to me. I figured both for the community and because I work closely with our staff and it's something they're sensitive about. And I actually went and looked at the areas specifically for non-residential parking areas that we can run, recommend to our staff, particularly looking at Placer Oaks. It's the side street right next to us. And how many cars we could fit in there employee-wise before actually hitting the residential area. And that should average about 12 to 15 cars of decent length, along with several other areas. So we can recommend that our staff does not go into the residential areas.
Thank you.
Commissioner Talasfor.
Yeah, just as a follow-up, can you tell, would you show us on the map where you were talking about having them parked along Placer Oaks? Did you mean on the street or on the property?
On the street, actually. I don't know if it will change with the new development. But at the moment, on Placer Oaks, before you hit the residential, there's another business property directly across from ours.
It's an office, yes. It's a two-story office with underground parking?
Yeah, two-story office here. And then along this road here and here, oh, here and here. I've gone several times a day to actually see if there are other businesses or cars that are parking there. At most, I've seen one so far. And then actually tried to, with my own car, judge how many spots might be available, whether it's to our staff or even to clients if there was any overflow.
Can we be sure, we need to be sure you're speaking into the microphone. It'll actually come out and take it with you either.
Sorry.
That's okay. Other questions for the applicant? Commissioner Bouchois.
This is not really a question, but I would just make a comment. This planned development took years to get approved. And the Placer Oaks neighbors were quite involved in that process. And parking on their street was one of their major concerns. So if you're gonna push the parking onto that street, I can't tell you what to do, but that was quite an issue in getting the PD developed. So just word of warning.
Can I comment? I mean, the bottom line is, our staff will be told whether or not they can park in the lot. And when there's a certain number of them are full, then it's gonna be their responsibility to get to work. And if we tell them they're not to park in the residential areas, then they'll have to find another way to get to work where, you know, we can't park unlimited parking. And I realize that it's an issue in Los Altos and it was downtown especially. But it's just the way that they will have to get around it. Because we won't be wanting to annoy the neighbors.
I think it would be fair to say that the standards of the town assume that we have parking capacity on the site and that all of the users, as well as the employees, would be parking on the site. That's part of the logic for the standard. So I would be cautious about suggesting as part of the public record that you might be parking someplace else. Commissioner Talasfor.
Thank you. I have three, three areas, and they're, I think, probably pretty explainable. But anyway, one, I wanted to know, dogs that are barking, because I'm sensitive to the neighbors that are going to be living there. So I'm going to assume, or I'm not, I don't want to assume. I want you to tell me that you'll be putting in windows inside the structure that are soundproof to neighbors for dog barking, cat meowing, whatever, is that?
Yes, that would be the case. I don't know if you'd want to speak to that.
I can address that pretty quickly. First of all, the maximum, and I apologize if I'm getting too technical for the commission, but the maximum sound level that dogs really bark at, and this is in a kennel where dogs are really going off, is around 100 decibels of sound. The exterior wall of the building and the corresponding insulated glass windows will buffer that level by 50 to 60 decibels. So taking the sound level down to about 50 or 60 decibels. That level of noise is about the sound level in an open office environment, so.
I don't know what that means. What does that mean in an open office environment?
Well, as an example, I have a sound meter on my iPhone. If I were to pull it out right here in this room right now, we would probably have a background noise level of about 40 decibels of noise. So it is barely audible and generally masked by background noise. I'm familiar with the site and just general traffic noise. And just the, almost the sound of rustling leaves is enough to mask the sound level that would come outside of the building. So it's.
Because there will be housing right near this, right? You understand that, okay.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Then my other question for you was, will you be having any outdoor pens at all for walking those dogs? Okay, and then my other, my last question is, are you, will you be offering any kind of dog training obedience classes, things like that for your clients?
Possibly, possibly in the retail location. Would be like a puppy class in the, in the middle of the day or something. We haven't, not through the veterinary hospital. And if that was something that wasn't allowed, we wouldn't do it. But we haven't actually, we haven't committed to that. So I don't know, is, if it's inside the building, potentially in the retail side.
It would be inside the building?
Yeah.
Okay. I think that's all I have for right now. And I'm not asking any questions about the retail because we're not seeing the retail. Thank you. So that'll be next time.
I just clarified that.
Oh, okay, well then, all right, then let me ask this.
Hold on a second.
I just clarified that if they decided to do that in the retail, other than one-on-one training, then they would need a CUP for the retail component as well.
Okay, so then I do have another question.
Okay, before, so we're, let me remind members of the commission that the planned development that has been adopted included the architectural site part of it, so that we are considering tonight solely the conditional use permit for the, that's solely what's in front of us this evening. So it would be great if the questions to the applicant would be directed to that issue.
Yeah.
And the responses would be directed to that. Commissioner Talasfor.
So just then, my last question is, are you planning on selling animals sometimes?
No.
No animals?
No.
Okay. Not even a little fish, huh?
No.
Okay. Just wanted to clear that up. Thank you.
Okay, great. Any further questions for the applicant? If not, thank you very much.
Thank you.
We would now open the public portion of the public hearing to any members of the public who would like to comment on this. We don't have any speaker cards for any members of the public. But if there's someone who would like to come forward, seeing no one, we would typically give the applicant three additional minutes to make any, to comment on any of the other public comments or to say anything else, you're okay. So we will close the public portion of the public hearing and ask, are there further questions of staff, by members of the commission, comments to be made, or entertain a motion? Commissioner Smith.
All right, I'll take a stab at this and say that I move to approve conditional use permit application U-13009. And in order to grant the CUP, I move that we make the following findings, that the proposed use is desirable to the public convenience and that it provides an animal hospital in service to the Los Gatos residents and their animals, that it does not impair the integrity or the character of the zone in that its proposed commercial use would be located in a commercial zone, that it is not detrimental to the public health, safety, or general welfare, and that the conditions regarding operating hours, surrounding area maintenance, number of doctors, and delivery times will mitigate potential impacts. And finally, that the proposed use is in harmony with the general plan and town code and that the conditions as set forth in the conditions of approval, Exhibit 3, be included in my motion.
We have a motion from Commissioner Smith to approve the conditional use permit application with the appropriate findings. Commissioner Talasfor.
And I'll second that.
Seconded by Commissioner Talasfor. Commissioner Bouchois.
I just want to make one quick comment. There was only one thing that really gave me a little bit of hesitation here. And that was the adjacency of this use to the park. And we spent a lot of time on this PD in that that park was meant to be a public amenity for the residents and located in a place that would tie in the commercial center to the residential center as a link between the residents and the commercial businesses. So I don't, there's no way of getting around, people are gonna use that. If they're bringing animals there, they're gonna use that park. I just, I just hope that the owners would be sensitive to that and not have this turn into a de facto dog park because that was, that was something that was not considered during the PD application. So I'm gonna support the motion, but I would just like to be, the owners of the project to be cognizant of that.
Thank you, Commissioner Bouchois. Other comments? If not, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, passes unanimously. Are there appeal rights, Mr. Paulson?
Yes, anyone that's not satisfied with the decision of the Planning Commission can appeal the decision to the Town Council. The appeal forms are available in the clerk's office. There is a fee for filing the appeal, and the appeal must be filed within 10 days.
Thank you, Mr. Paulson. The next item on our agenda is a public hearing considering conditional use permit application U-13-068, which is requesting approval of a restaurant at 681 Blossom Hill Road on property zone CHPD. There are, I don't believe there are any disclosures from any commissioners on this item. The, this permit is at the same general location as the one before it. May we have a brief staff report, Ms. Walters?
Yes, thank you. The restaurant, Phil's Coffee, proposes to use a 1,600-square-foot and adjacent outdoor patio space in a building near the corner of Los Gatos Boulevard and Blossom Hill Road. The applicant has requested a maximum of 12 seats to be used indoors or on the outdoor patio. And this concludes staff's report.
Thank you, Ms. Walters. Are there questions of the staff at this time? Commissioner O'Donnell.
I just want to go over and ask you on the seating. I'm looking at Exhibit 6. And you can see four seats in a row. You can see four seats, two facing each other, two facing each other. But there is, over by the refrigerator, there is a legend that says, counter for seating with community wall. If you go outside, there are four seats. So assuming there's seating at the counter for seating with community wall, there are more than 12 seats.
I believe, we can ask the applicant, but I believe it's a community wall to post things. And I'm not sure why it says seating because that's not an area that we counted for seating at all.
Okay, well, I will ask that, thank you.
Other questions of staff at this time? If not, we will open the public portion of the public hearing and invite the applicant forward and let you introduce yourself, ask that you fill out a speaker card at the appropriate moment, and introduce yourself.
Good evening. My name is Rob George. I'm district manager for Phil's Coffee Company. Very casual comments for you, mainly to express our appreciation for the opportunity to open a Phil's Coffee in Los Gatos. As a longtime Santa Clara Valley resident and now employee of Phil's, I'm excited to bring Phil's to the residents of Los Gatos. A true family-owned and operated company that started in San Francisco approximately 30 years ago as a grocery store, converting to a coffee shop in the Mission District about 10 years ago. And really with a specific mission of bettering people's day. And I don't think there's a better town in the valley that betters folks' day than a walk down the street in Los Gatos. So again, we just want to express your, our appreciation for the consideration of this use permit. And being a resident of San Jose since I was born, very excited to have a Phil's closer than my drive to Palo Alto every day, so.
Thank you, Mr. George. Are there questions for the applicant, Mr. O'Donnell?
I just want to pin down the question I previously asked. Perhaps the use of the term seating on that counter for community wall is in error?
Well, I don't, this is the first time that I've actually seen the plan with these specifics in it. Typically, what we have in our, in our cafes is a, there's sort of a community component. So we may, and we will invite local artists to show their art. And typically, that area of the cafe is one of those areas. Sometimes it represents itself as a community board where there's postings. Sometimes actual local artists will post there. Typically, we will have some counter space in the cafe for the standing visitor. And we have a store on Golden Gate Avenue in San Francisco that does that, where folks come in, they'll sip their coffee, they might check their email, and they'll move on quickly without any seating at all. So I, you know, without speaking specifically to the design.
Well, since, since the analysis is on 12 seats, what I'm going to ask you is if we strike seating on that diagram so that we're approving 12 seats and not 13 or 14, is that consistent with your understanding?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Smith.
Thank you. Perhaps you, I'm trying to think about whether or not you would have this information. But let me ask you, in normally, in other fills, and I haven't seen any other locations, is this walk-up, more walk-up business? Or is this commuters that come in and grab their coffee and pastry and then continue on?
We usually base our mix on 80% commuter and 20% cafe. And that varies from store to store. I mean, really, what we strive to do is, is find a, you know, find that perfect community feel for the store based on the community. So, you know, initially, we like to say 80/20. But some of our, we have a new store that's opened in Cupertino about a month ago. And it is about 90% commuter. And we have limited seating there as well. So, you know, that's kind of a vague answer, but 80/20 is our general guideline.
That answered the other question that I had. But the second question I have is that in the cover letter application, you talked about what would be served, and it would be the beverages that would be served. And then it says you would also sell merchandise and cold beverages. And we know that there won't be any alcohol because that's already been covered. But what I'm wondering is, number one, what the merchandise is. And number two, because you have such a long business day, so early and so late, if there's only going to be pastries or, you know, your intention is to have where people come in and grab and go a lunch. I'm just, I'm just asking that as I think about the CUP.
So our general food selection is pastries, cookies, burritos, yogurt, in terms of grab-and-go. But basically, a pretty simple lineup of food. Our primary focus is the beverage. Bottled water, O'Dwalla juices are also part of that, that mix. In terms of merchandise, it's Phil's branded merchandise, so tumblers and t-shirts mainly. And then we also sell whole beans. So if you wanted to come in and buy a half-pound or full pound of our blends, you could do that as well. But I mean, in terms of merchandise, it's basically t-shirts and branded tumblers.
Okay, thank you.
Other questions of the applicant at this time? If not, thank you very much.
Thank you.
We would offer an opportunity for members of the public to address the commission about this application. We do not have any speaker cards. Don't see anyone coming forward. We would again give you typically three minutes to make any additional comments if you would choose to. You're good. We will then close the public portion of the public hearing and ask if there are any further questions of staff from the commissioners, comments, or consideration of a motion. Commissioner Smith.
I do have a question of staff, and maybe I'm just missing, missing it. I probably am. The delivery hours, you have them between 9:00 a.m. and 4:00 p.m. So for certain, nothing can be delivered before 9:00 a.m., right? Again, I'm just thinking of these neighbors and between deliveries to the animal hospital and deliveries here. Usually, the food service deliveries are very early in the morning. So you, did you discuss that with the applicant?
We did. We discussed it at length with the, its proximity to residential uses and how the noise would affect and deliveries would affect the residents.
Okay, so. Okay, so that will be part and parcel of the CUP. Thank you. That's it.
Commissioner O'Donnell.
If there are no further questions, I'll make a motion. I move that we approve the conditional use permit, subject to the conditions which are attached. No further environmental analysis is required because of the prior mitigated negative declaration, and that we make the required findings, which are specifically set forth in Exhibit 2, which I will not further read. So that would be the motion.
Commissioner Bouchois. Motion introduced by Commissioner O'Donnell, seconded by Commissioner Bouchois. Any further comments? If not, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Passes unanimously. Are there appeal rights, Mr. Paulson?
There are. Anyone who's not satisfied with the decision of the planning commission can appeal to the council. The forms are available in the clerk's department. There's a fee for filing the appeal, and the appeal must be filed within 10 days.
Thank you. We'll now move to agenda item number three, which is a public hearing considering conditional use permit application U-12-0010, requesting approval of bank at 663 Blossom Hill Road on property zone CHPD. I don't believe there are any disclosures from any commissioners on this one. Everyone's familiar with the location of the proposed business. Ms. Walters, may we have a brief staff report?
Yes, thank you. The tenant space for this item is located on the first floor of a building located near the corner, again, of Los Gatos Boulevard and Blossom Hill, one building up from the restaurant we just discussed. There is an outdoor ATM that's proposed to be located on the western elevation of the building, and the police department has reviewed the proposal location and has approved it for clear visibility for public safety.
Are there questions of staff at this time? If not, we would invite the applicant to come forward. I believe that's Steve Stoddard from Chase Bank.
Hi, my name's Jeff Halbert from Chase Bank. Steve is here, he's our architect.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Halbert.
Cut to the chase and, pardon the pun, answer any questions you have. It's pretty much a standard, straightaway bank that you've probably all been in before, you know, the operation. I'm here to answer any questions you might have.
Are there questions for the applicant? Commissioner Talisfor.
Is for the applicant or the staff, but I'm curious about the ATM machine, excuse me, the lighting surrounding that? It's 24 hours, isn't it?
Yes, correct.
So, and the lighting around that, is that, I mean, how will that be? I can't remember.
It's, I can let Steve explain the luminosity of the lighting around the ATM, but it's set by law.
Okay.
You have to have certain lighting in order to provide safety standards for people using the ATM.
The reason I ask is just for residences, and if it would be too bright or whatever, but I mean, I understand that.
It's really, it's directed.
Down.
Exactly, down, so that that area around the ATM is, is lit for security purposes. It's not meant to shine into the parking lot or anything like that.
All right, thank you.
Commissioner O'Donnell.
I just want to ask you a question on Exhibit 6, which is the layout of the, of the bank. I see the ATM vestibule, which I take it to be an enclosed, well, appears to be an enclosed vestibule, but if you move off to the, move down and to your left, you see something called ATM room. What is the ATM room as opposed to the ATM vestibule?
The room is on the left side of the building. Is that what you're just looking at? And the vestibule's on the top right.
Right. Well, top, top, it's the, yeah, it's a little bit right.
Yeah, yeah, the right of the center part. The ATM room is the interior part of the ATM where you go into the back of the ATM to fill it with money, right? That's the room, and then the ATM faces the outside there, right next to the doorway, that's the exterior portion of the ATM. So the room, the ATM room is the actual functional aspects to get to the ATM.
Well, I guess I'm confused, and I apologize if I'm just totally misreading this.
Sure.
The ATM room is nowhere near the ATM vestibule.
There, I'll get to that in my second part of the, of your question.
But you told me what you do with the ATM room is you service the ATM.
That's correct.
Which is in the vestibule, and I, I can't quite figure out how you do that.
Well, the, there's an exterior ATM on the left side of the building near the door. That's the exterior ATM. You can see that little.
So there are two ATMs in the, in the bank?
There are multiple ATMs in this, in this building.
At different locations.
There's only one facing the exterior, and that's on the left side of the building that we were just talking about.
It might be helpful to put this in on the overhead. Do you have a copy of your?
Is this, is this work?
Yeah.
Yeah, that'd be great.
Yeah. So if, if you want to access the ATM on the left-hand side.
You walk up, you get out of your car, you walk up on the sidewalk, and it's right there.
It's right there. If you want to access the ATM, which is.
The interior ATMs, which are in the vestibule on the top of the page, you walk in through the door into the branch, right? And there are some standalone ATMs, which we, which.
I see.
For lack of a better term, we'll call them ATMs, but they're actually these new-fangled iPad things for conducting electronic banking, okay?
Well, are those ATMs in the vestibule only accessible when the bank is open?
Well, there are, can I go to the?
Sure, take the mic with you, please.
It might be a little easier, yeah. Can we hear?
Yeah.
This is the exterior ATM we've been talking about with the lighting that goes down. The, the other doorway that you enter here, there is a roll-down gate here, so that after hours, if you wanted to, you could card swipe with your, your Chase card to get access into here, and then you'd have access to this one extra ATM here, okay? During normal hours, of course, the, the gate is up, right? You just walk into the branch, and there are three of those guys here. So after hours, the gate goes down, you can get in through a key card and use the interior one. Does that make sense? Or, of course, you can always use the, this one 24 hours a day because it's on the exterior face of the building.
So you have two because you believe that's more convenient for your customers?
Yeah, some, some customers like the security, if you will, of swiping and going into a room by yourself to conduct your business versus an exterior by the parking lot.
I understand.
It's a matter of choice.
Thank you.
Are there other questions of the applicant? I have one quick question, Mr. Howard. This will be Chase's fourth location in the town, is that correct?
I'm not exactly sure how many there are. I know the closest one is just up north there in that little shopping center. Is that, is that a Nob Hill? Yeah, that's the closest one there, probably a couple others, yeah.
Yeah. Okay, so this is not to replace an existing location in town?
No, no.
Okay, thank you.
You think this is a new one.
Any other questions for the applicant at this time? If not, thank you very much. There, we don't have any speaker cards for members of the public, but we would invite members of the public to comment on the application. Seeing no one, we would again offer you an optional three minutes, which they're declining. So we will close the public portion of the public hearing and ask the commissioner if there are additional questions, comments, or entertain a motion. Commissioner Talisfor.
Thank you. I'll, I will entertain, make the motion for Chase Bank after reviewing the application. I, I don't really have any additional conditions to suggest, although I find it interesting to have interior places to conduct business at night. I, that's new, I think, at least for me. Anyway, so I would like to move for approval conditional use permit U-13-008 for a bank with an outdoor ATM on property zone CHPD, APN 52916-053. I can make the findings on Exhibit 2 for SEQA and for findings for the, for a conditional use permit. I think this will probably be a very desirable public convenience for those of people that do use Chase Bank.
I have a motion from Commissioner Talisfor to approve the conditional use permit, seconded by Commissioner Birch. Commissioner Bouchois.
Just a quick comment. I would like to say during the, the development of the PD, there's a lot of discussion about making sure that this center was neighborhood-serving, right? Because there was a big residential component along with this retail office commercial space, and I think with a coffee shop, a vet, and a bank, I think we're off to a good start of actually getting people out of their cars and really serving the residents that are, that are right in that vicinity. So I, it's really nice to see them all together at one time, so, thank you.
Other comments? If not, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Passes unanimously. Mr. Paulson, are there appeal rights?
Anyone not satisfied with the decision of the planning commission can appeal it to the town council. The appeal must be filed within 10 days. The forms are available in the clerk department, and there is a fee for filing the appeal.
Thank you, Mr. Paulson. The next item on our agenda is a public hearing considering architectural site application S-13-047, which is requesting approval to install a safety barrier net for the golf course at La Rincana Country Club, which is located at 14595 Clearview Drive on property which is owned RC. Are there any disclosures from commissioners? Everyone, I assume, is, is familiar with this location. Ms. Savage, may we have a brief staff report?
Good evening, Commissioner. The La Rincana Country Club actually recently remodeled their pool area, and that has seen an increase of the use of that particular area. There was some issues with that increased use of golf balls actually entering the swimming pool area and causing some safety hazards. The golf club did some studies and found that the relationship between the swimming pool and the golf course was created when golf balls hit into the parking lot just west of the swimming pool. It would hit the pavement and then bounce into the swimming pool area. The proposed safety barrier would prevent that from happening. The safety barrier is 30 feet tall, supported by 12 steel columns, and there would be horizontal netting placed above, at the top of the columns. It is made from polyester netting, black with a sewn rope border. A sample is here, if you want to take a closer look at it. It does not exceed the height limit of the zone and would not be visible off-site. Height poles and orange netting was actually placed in the location to provide a, a sample of how high it would be. It would actually create a safer facility for the country club. This concludes staff presentation, and we are available for any questions.
Thank you, Ms. Savage. Do we have questions for the staff at this time? If not, we'll open the public portion of the public hearing and invite the applicant to address the commission up to five minutes, and I believe Stan Prolo and friends.
Good evening. My name is Stan Prolo, and I'm the controller and assistant general manager at La Rincana Country Club. Ms. Savage did an eloquent job of explaining the, the reason and purpose for our netting structure. It is, several options have, have been viewed. We brought in two golf course architects. In addition, we've done a risk assessment study of, of the property. Our number one goal is safety, and the project that we, or the proposal that we have, application in front of you, is what we deem to be the, the best option of all of the variables that we've looked at. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Prolo. Are there questions for the applicant at this time? Commissioner Bouchois.
I'll just make a quick comment. I really appreciated the analysis and go, bringing us through your thought process of the alternatives. I mean, that's really helpful when we make decisions, or applicants do that, so I really commend you on that. That was very helpful.
I would echo that, too. I thought that was terrific and was, made, made our job in understanding the issues a whole lot easier. Any other questions of the applicant at this time? If not, thank you very much. We would again invite members of the public who would like to address the commission on this architectural site application to come forward. If not, we would also extend an opportunity for another three minutes. That's okay. So we'll close the public portion of the public hearing, ask if there are other questions, comments from the commission, or the chair would entertain a motion. Commissioner Bouchois.
I'm going to make a motion to approve architecture and site application S-13-047. I thought the analysis provided by the applicant really brought us through the logic and the thought process of how they arrived at their solution, which I think ultimately is, is probably the best solution for their issue. And so, based on that information, I can make the required findings. First, that the project is categorically exempt pursuant to Section 15303 of SEQA. I can make the required considerations in Section 292150 of the Town Code for approval on architecture and site application as outlined in Exhibit 2, and therefore I recommend approval of arc and site application S-13047 with the conditions as outlined in Exhibit 3.
We have a motion from Commissioner Bouchois to approve the architectural site application. Do we have a second? Commissioner Smith.
I'll second the motion.
Seconded by Commissioner Smith. Any additional comments from the commission? If not, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Passes unanimously. Mr. Paulson, are there appeal rights?
There are appeal rights. Anyone that's not satisfied with the decision can appeal it to the town council. The forms are available in the clerk department. There's a fee for filing the appeal, and the appeal must be filed within 10 days.
Thank you, Mr. Paulson. We'll now move to agenda item number five, which is a public hearing considering conditional use permit application U-13-004, which is a questioning approval to relocate a not, currently non-conforming Formula Retail apparel store within the Old Town Shopping Center to another commercial space in that same shopping center that was previously occupied by a Formula Retail bookstore located at 50 University Avenue. Are there any disclosure from commissioners? Commissioner O'Donnell.
Yes, since I live within 500 feet of this location, I will have to recuse myself.
Commissioner Smith.
And the same thing for me. I live within 500 feet of this proposed space, so I must recuse myself.
We will miss you, but we will carry on without you. Mr. O'Donnell, yes, do we have a brief staff report?
Thank you. As, as you noted, this is an application for a conditional use permit to relocate existing non-conforming retail use. The existing Chico store is located in the Old Town Shopping Center. They're actually proposing to relocate across the center into a portion of space that was previously, previously occupied by the Borders bookstore on the ground floor. If you remember, the commission reviewed a, a conditional use permit application in March that took up a portion of that space. This particular application would take up the remaining space. That pretty much concludes staff's presentation, and I'm here for, to be able to answer any questions of the committee.
Thank you. Are there, Commissioner Talisfor?
My question, or maybe it's more appropriate for the applicant, I'm not sure, but the signage that's presently at the Chico's building, will that now be just transferred over to the new building that they'll be occupying, or will there be a whole different signage?
No signage is proposed as part of this application, but as a routine, they would need to basically apply for a brand-new sign permit that would need to be consistent also with the sign program in the center.
Okay, thank you.
Other questions of the staff at this time? If not, we would then open the public portion of the public hearing, and we have a, a number of people here from Chico's who are anxious to address us, so that we all have speaker cards for us, so we would invite you forward and let you identify who's going in to address Just to be sure that you're clear, we, you have five minutes between all of you.
Yep. My name is Brian Sorley. I'm vice president of real estate for Chico's FAS Inc.
I'm Amy Almeda, digital sales manager for the San Jose market for Chico's.
And I'm Aileen Larson, store manager and local resident of Los Gatos.
Thank you, commissioners, for allowing us to be in front of you tonight to talk about this, this relocation and expansion of the store. Just a, just a little bit of history, the store opened in April of 1999, so we've been in, in existence here in the town of Los Gatos for, for that many years, and I think we've served, served the community very well, and, but we, you know, as we've evolved into this, this company, I just wanted to touch a little bit on the, the physical plant, the real estate. Amy is going to talk a little bit about the store experience and what, what that means from the existing experience versus the relocation, and what, what, what benefits are derived from that. And then Aileen will talk a little bit about some of the, just briefly, a little bit about the, the outreach in the community that, that the store currently does and will, will continue to do. community that that the store currently does and will continue to do going forward. Right now, the store is 1,650 square feet. I think there's a little bit of information in your in your packet. We're proposing to to relocate, again, in the same shopping center, for the remaining portion of the Borders bookstore cut-up to approximately 3,500 square feet. And 3,500 square feet is today's prototypical Chico's store layout. So what this does is afford affords us to provide the current, the most current store design. And just to answer the question on the signage, yes, there will be brand-new signage on the on the store to reflect today's, you know, logo. I believe the the current store is a former or past logo of Chico's, so it's a more contemporary look on the store, on the signage. It also, without additional square footage, gives us ability to provide a full merchandising plan for the store. You know, the merchandise selections would be more plentiful and and buried. That's one of the comments, and I think there's also another packet in or some some comments in your packet about the merchandise. We just can't, we can't afford, we can't provide the full assortment of merchandise in the current in the current store. There's additional fitting rooms provided in this new space. Again, that's one of the big comments from our from our customers is the size and lack or lack of the number of fitting rooms. And really, it's just the, you know, accessibility and the ease of shopping in this in this brand-new store format.
I don't know if I can do this in two minutes. I think what I would like to convey to you all is our customer experience here in the town of Los Catos for our customers. We provide most amazing personal service, and that's something that we're very passionate about as a company. We have an incredibly passionate, wonderful customer here in this town for our store. And she has said over and over again how she would love to see a larger location and what that could do for her experience in in our current location. She's not getting the experience that we're used to providing as a company, and she is asking for a better experience. Not just the product assortment, but she's coming in with her friends, and and now we're reaching to generations of shoppers in this town. And she really wants to be able to come in and have that great experience in a larger format than four fitting rooms and two cash registers. It's just we we have outgrown her in this location. So I think that's probably the most important thing that we can say for her. And I hear it every week. I'm here every week. And she voices her opinions every week, and in our surveys online as well. So it's heard over and over. In addition, we have outreach to the community. We do grassroots outreach events where we partner with local businesses and bakeries and some restaurants, and it's a win-win situation. We're getting exposure to them as well as she's coming in because she's excited about the free raffle, about the buy-one-get-one free bakery item, or the free food. We do samples. So it's kind of, you know, in-house advertising, and they're 29 seconds. What can I say? So I really believe it's a win-win situation for the community. We love our Chico's, Los Catos customers, and she would just love to have that in a greater, you know, expansion of an experience. And I took up her time.
Thank you very much. Commissioner Talisfor?
I have a question, and it was about the grassroots outreach. So can you explain a little bit what or tell us what stores you have partnered with here in the local community?
Absolutely. We've worked specifically with Los Catos Roasting Company, Icing on the Cake, Everything Bund Cake, as well as Willow Street, Woodfire Pizza, and The Moon.
Okay. And I think that's all.
May I mention one other thing? We do partner with the History Club of Los Catos as well. So we do fashion shows with them annually for their fundraisers, most notably the one in 2011, which we did, which raised $10,000 for the Los Catos Library.
Thank you.
Other questions of the applicant? If not, thank you very much. We would invite members of the public who might want to address us on this application. Seeing none, we would give the applicant typically another three minutes if you have other things you'd like to say. If not, we'll close the public portion of the public hearing and turn to the commission for comments, observations, questions, or a motion. Commissioner Talisfor?
My question is going to get back to the signage again, because there is an Old Town signage program, I believe. Is that correct?
That's correct.
And so that's what Chico's would be working with?
They would have to conform with that sign program.
With that, yeah, because it's a very strong one.
Yes, it is.
Yes, okay, thank you. So with that, I can make the motion.
That would be terrific.
I would like to make the motion to approve conditional use permit application U-13-004, requesting approval to relocate a non-conforming formula retail apparel store, Chico's, within a shopping center to another commercial space that was previously occupied by a formula retail bookstore, Borders. The APN on that is 529-02-044. I can make the findings required for SEQA, and also findings for the Town Code for granting conditional use. And as far as the property is essential or desirable, I would say desirable because it does serve a certain population of women. And I have visited the store, and I it is very, very, how do I say, you are blooming with clothes all the time. It's a little hard to shop in there, and I could certainly understand that. So for that reason, I make that motion. And the fact that the town's signage, your signage will be under the Old Town program, so.
May I clarify with the maker of the motion? We also have to make, you also make a required finding on the redevelopment.
Oh, is that, oh, did I miss that? Sorry. Oh, there it is. Required finding for redevelopment plan for the central Los Catos redevelopment project area. That it is consistent with the plan and the central Los Catos redevelopment project area, Section 4B.
So we have a motion by Commissioner Talisfor to approve conditional use permit application U-13-004. The chair will second the motion. Ask that there are any comments. Commissioner Bouchard?
I would like just to make one comment. My fellow commissioners are giving me a hard time. I have quite often in the past expressed my concern about the density of formula retail, as well as the lack of diversity of retail use in Old Town. I will be supporting this motion. It is was made quite clear by the town council that replacing retail use for retail use within, formula retail use with formula retail use within the Old Town is is their interpretation of how things should proceed, and I clearly want to support a successful local business, so.
Other comments? If not, all in favor, please say aye. Opposed, motion passes unanimously for zero with the recusals from Commissioner O'Donnell and Commissioner Smith. There are appeal rights. Mr. Paulson?
There are. Anyone that's not satisfied with the decision of the planning commission can appeal it to the town council. Forms are available in the clerk department. The appeal must be filed within 10 days, and there is a fee for filing the appeal.
Thank you, Mr. Paulson. We have a report from the Community Development Director.
We do. Since we haven't had a meeting, we got a meeting off, I have a few DRC approvals to inform you of. On May 28th, an approval for a minor restaurant at 15466 Los Catos Boulevard, which is the Trader Joe's Center, was approved for a restaurant called Top This Pizza. On
It called?
Top This Pizza.
And that'll go in the space that's just adjacent to, it's next to
It's the Crimson, it's the old Crimson Restaurant.
The old Crimson, thank you.
Yes. On June 18th, the architecture and site application was approved at 17 Bicknell Road to demolish an existing single-family residence and construct a new single-family residence. It's a technical demolition, as well as architecture and site approval for 140 South Santa Cruz Avenue for exterior modifications to a commercial structure, which is at the Toll House. And 60 Central Avenue, a certificate of compliance was approved to recognize three parcels at 60 Central Avenue. On June 25th, yesterday, we approved an architecture and site approval to demolish an existing home at 110 Drysdale Drive and construct a new single-family residence for a house that was damaged by fire. Couple other things. On June 3rd, the town council, as I'm sure many of you are aware, approved the Albright Plan Development Architecture Site Application and certified the EIR. They did make modifications to reduce Buildings 1 and 4 to 50 feet, which brought down the total maximum square footage to approximately 485,000 square feet. On June 17th, the town council adopted regulations relating to firearms. Land use regulations for firearms will be coming back to the planning commission. That's tentatively scheduled for August. And lastly, I just also wanted to echo Chair Erickson's sentiments for Ms. Rolet's last meeting tonight. I'm sure she's really distraught and wishes she could just continue going, but we appreciate all that she's done for the commission and the town as serving in this role, and we wish her well.
Thank you, Mr. Paulson. And once again, thank you, Linda, very much. Just as a matter of information, as I understand from the staff, we will be having two meetings in the month of July and in the month of August.
Correct. We will be having the June, July 24th meeting in July.
Just so everyone's aware. Other commission matters? Commissioner Talisfor?
It's not a matter, but I wanted to do a follow-up. Is that called a matter or just a follow-up? About the signage, we're starting to get the applications for the Swanson Ford site. So, and I remembered at the at the time of that approval that you said that there was going to be an entire signage program?
I don't remember if it was me, but yes, there will be a sign program.
Yes. So I'm wondering how, and you said you would keep a surprise of that. How do we get, do we
I will contact the planner who's handling that project, which is Ms. Avila. I don't believe it has been finalized yet. Once we get close to that point, I believe that some information will be provided to the commission.
Okay, that'd be great to be able to see those. Thank you.
Other questions or other matters? If not, we're adjourned.